Picked up somebody, but I got somebody else.
That, that, I, I was just trying to see, cause there was some chocolate in there that...
Did it melt?
No, 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 no. It, I mean, it was good. It was like a cranberry.
Oh, I know what he had, had a cream in it.
Yes, ma'am.
I ate all my candy. I was eating my candy. Oh, I'm sorry.
It was, it's at the...
Good evening, everyone. It's that time again. We're opening our meeting. You, in case you're not sure where you are, you're at the City Council of Crockett, Texas. And at this time, we're opening our meeting. We will open it with invocation and a pledge.
Will you do this?
Okay.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, thanking you and praising you for this day. And we thank you for all of your blessings, Lord. And we're asking you tonight, Lord, to just to be with us tonight as we gather here at City Hall. We pray that you'd give us wisdom concerning all of the issues pertaining to our city and for our betterment and for our welfare and for our growth here in Crockett, Texas. We ask you for wisdom beyond our experience or our knowledge tonight in making decisions concerning these things. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus Christ, and we give you praise. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for the prayer. I like the fact to give us wisdom beyond what we're capable of ourselves like that. With that being said, at this time, we're recognizing all our visitors. Thank you so much for taking out of your busy day to join us and your concern for the city to join us. And at this time, we have comments, and we have one comment, one commenter. Joe Martin will be speaking, and we just remind you how it works. You get to say your three minutes. We don't respond, but we do appreciate them.
Okay. I'm Joe Martin, and who is Joe Martin? I'm a recording artist, entertainer, singer-songwriter, played in forty-eight states. Mexico, played in Tulip, Greenland, played several years in Vegas. I lived in Vegas. I did a recording at the Prominent Studio, Sugar Hill in Eastern Texas. I was affiliated with Cowboy Jack Clements Studio by way of the mayor, Ken Ritter in Beaumont, and also known in Petty's Close from Mexico, S.O.U.N.D. Sound. I come here not to be seen. I come here to hear what's going on, cause I'm interested in what each and other one of you guys have to say. And the mics are not utilized in effect. Mr. Mike Marsh, you're a sound man. Dennis Ivy, you're also an entertainer. You can take a nap on preaching to the choir. The rest need to speak into the microphone, two, three inches. That's it. So, and when you turn your head, we lose you. So, you gotta either move with the microphone, especially Miss Dick. I can't understand nothing. You talk a lot, but I don't know what you're saying. And I have been given a set of digital hearing aids from the VA, the best there is, and I still can't hear you. So, I'm asking you guys, speak into the mic. So, all of us, and especially you come up to the podium, speak into this, but they don't wanna hear you. You can't hear nothing moving back. These are directional microphones. Your sound spectrum, the graphs on PA, they should be in the mid-range. Voice drops dead quick if the PA is not set. And it's in the administrative office, up on the shelf, behind Plexiglas. So, it's of no use to somebody adjusting it here. So, it should be out here. So, you guys can do a sound check before the meetings and make sure everybody can hear what you're saying. Cause once again, I'm interested, and I'm sure everybody else is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mic check, mic check.
Mic check.
Oh, that's a response. At this time, it brings us to item number one. Approval of the minutes for regular session, October the sixth, twenty twenty-five. Mayor, Mayor, I, I, I just, I'm gonna approve those. Okay, pull, just pull your mic down. Your mic is up high here. Pull it down a little bit. I mean, even kinda like, just see. Okay.
Did she say she's gonna approve it? I second it.
I, that's what... I make a motion to accept the October sixth minutes.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second all in favor. Motion carries. It brings us to item number two. It's been, it's not another agenda item on it. That's all we can do with that. It's been approved in second. It's, the agenda is covered. The item is covered. But I, I can make a motion on, on, I can make a motion, can I? No, it's, I mean, it's not another thing on the agenda. We've, for that same, for the minutes. About four minutes, yes. Oh, no, it's already been approved in second. Well, well, I mean, I need to, there's some things on the, on the minutes. But, excuse me. We've had the motion. The motion has passed, and we're on to the next item. Okay, so are there any corrections that need to be made? It has been approved, and the motion is now addressed. We're on to the next item. How do we make the, how do we make corrections to the minutes? There are no correction being made. They should have been made in, when we, when it was over. Before, it was, it was a minute that you could have discussed it, but that was it. Okay, but you didn't ask for discussion. You approve, you approve the minutes. Well, she's a facilitator. So, we're through with that one. Okay, item number two, reports. Update on special projects and business development.
Mayor, Council, I have a few updates for you. I'll touch on a few of them. The rest of them are written down. Um, you can ask questions on those as we go down. Um, the storm sirens, um, the delays of delivery of them. They're projecting it to be middle members instead of mid-October. They said they didn't receive a large influx of them, and they're having problems getting all that delivery out. But they are finalizing that. Um, we also received an opportunity to apply for a fifty thousand dollar grant, which is what our match is for that project. Um, it was a ten percent, ten ninety split, around five hundred thousand on a grant. So, we were committing fifty thousand of it. Uh, we do have a grant opportunity that it looks like, um, we will receive. We've been talk, verbally told to proceed.
Good.
And so, that also helps in the fifty thousand dollar cost share. Um, the engineering has been completed, uh, preliminary engineering design has been completed for East Goliad and East Houston. We did some markups on it last week, sent those off, and then after those are completed, and Texas Water Development Board signs off on it, then we'll go to bid. And that's gonna be for the large construction project for water lines on West Goliad and Houston. Um, I wanna touch a little bit about this. There was some conversation about this at our last meeting. And, uh, without getting too deep in, I wanna, uh, tell Council of some of the opportunities that's been presented us and, uh, at least some of our, uh, options. In the Texas Water Development Board program that we applied for, uh, we applied for a water mill and we applied for wastewater treatment plant rebuild. In that, we asked for an asset management plan, both on sewer and water, where engineers come in and assess everything that we get on all the infrastructure, motors, pumps, wells, pipes. And they do an assessment about how long they believe it'll last and how much it'll cost when that time comes to replace it. An asset management plan and depreciation plan to where we can start, um, planning for the future, knowing the things that are coming up instead of acting, uh, retroactively saying, hey, this broke. We gotta go find the money to fix it. That being said, we knew that it was pretty critical that the water districts do the same thing. We rely on the water district for, uh, for providing us water. If for us to say how much it's gonna cost us to deliver water to our citizens, we also know, need to know the water district that's providing us that water, instead of them acting retroactively and as they, if they go into a deficit one year, then they come and say, hey, we need local prices, we need to know what that price outlay would, these would look like for us as a city and for the district for them to continue, to be able to continue. There's been some talks, um, and I wanna clarify, this is not consolidated water. We're not discussing... Our, our interactions with the district is the water control improvement district that owns, that operates the lake that provides us water. There was some confusion saying, talking about the consolidated water. Um, we do have an interlocal agreement with them where we share water. When they need it, we can provide them and vice versa. But it's the city of Crockett and the Houston County Water Control Improvement District, number one. That being said, we spoke with them and they're, they've, uh, told us that they would put it on their next agenda. When the engineers were working on our pro, on our infrastructure, they're wanting our, the engineers to also work on their infrastructure to give them an outlay of what they own, what shape it's in, what's it gonna cost to replace it, how much revenue they actually need, where everything is based on facts and not, um, deficits or surpluses that we get in here. We wanna, we want Council to commit, to put a steering committee together along with the water district, maybe a couple of community members, to look over these, look over these findings from our engineers and based on facts, us to make decisions moving forward as a city. Where we're gonna get our water from? Are we gonna drill more wells? Um, as, as Councilman Marsh mentioned last, um, meeting, maybe that four million dollars, we have roughly four million dollars that was, um, brought in for a well. Do we need that well? Lots of bargains that we probably do. Or do we need to invest that money or a portion of that money in a, with a water control improvement district to fix some of their issues as we move forward? We need to look at it as a, as a partnership as a, as a city. When we are almost a hundred percent of their customer base, we are their biggest customer. We use almost all of their water. So, they rely on us and we rely on them. Um, a quick update, a quick up, update on the water exportation. Um, we have, we've, we've hired legal counsel for our water opposition, the Red Town Ranch Drilling that has, um, that started this year. Um, just a quick, to touch on that, we have a law firm that represents us with sixteen other members. There's seventeen members total that they represent. Sanders and Farms also retained counsel, and they went and filed a lawsuit against the Groundwater Conservation District for having issued those applications in the first place and declared them as, the applications as, um, administratively complete. Due to two of the board members that were on the board at that time, their argument was that they were not properly seated and were not able to make those votes to accept those applications. As part of the agreement, the Groundwater Conservation District has agreed, as of Thursday, they had a meeting, and agreed to, um, enter into an agreement with Sanders and Farms and, um, void their action due to the people that were on the board that were not allowed to go there. So, they've agreed to void those applications and revisit them. Their motion and, and the, the direction was to revisit them after a groundwater study is completed. And then they can reapply those in the process, but they won't have groundwater, uh, study of our aquifer system to know whether they can support those wells or not or some fashion from there. Um, so at this time, the water wells are not proceeding forward with it. And just to clarify, that's, they're not proceeding forward on Anderson County's side. In Houston County, they're not required to apply for permits. They can drill anyway. We hope that due to the volume of water that they're needing, if they are going to export and water, they're relying on a total project for it to proceed forward, and that they won't proceed forward with the, the eleven wells that they had planned for Houston County. They weren't applying for thirty-two wells total.
So, another question. So, being clear, so we're, we're still with the law firm?
Yes.
Are we still, okay, engaged?
Okay.
They, and they went, um, like I said, they went and attended the meetings. They're representing us water supply, suppliers at district meetings and any of the board meetings. They're also going through a GMA eleven, is going through a new, uh, desired future condition study. And so, um, I guess we're looking out on our behalf.
Okay, uh, is my understanding, they've already drilled some wells? Is that...
To our understanding, they've only drilled two test wells.
Okay. Well, what are their means of transporting? You were talking about transporting the water?
They haven't shown any of those yet. They said, in their initial, um, in their initial, uh, presentation at the initial Groundwater Conservation District meeting, they said they were gonna do a three phase. They were gonna do drilling permits, then they were going to address exportation permits, work, operate permit, permits for pumping, and then pump permits. If the, if the pumping was there, if there was enough water, which we feel like there would be, they're not gonna ask that much money into the wells ahead of town, and they already have a test well, so they do know how much water there is. And so, it, then the third phase would be exportation, and then that's when those plans would be revealed, but after the first two phases are completed.
So, it either had to be by truck or pipeline?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, they'd have to get easements all the way to their destination point. That would take some time.
Our biggest concern, um, initially was there is no report or studies validating our fears or concerns or not. So, maybe the reports will come back and say that there's sufficient water for all of us for a hundred years. We know that that's not the case, but I'm just saying, we gotta have that to show us one way or another to know whether we should support exportation projects out of Houston. Are there any couple of questions on the horse side? Uh, we also completed our gateway signs.
Look good.
We finished the landscaping and the lighting on those, um, a couple of weeks ago. We also, um, two weeks ago, finished the, um, the grounding of the stripes, the crosswalks on this square. Texas Auto hired their contractor in to ground all those and repaint those. And if you notice, every other crosswalk has been eliminated. They eliminated crosswalks from unmanaged stop signs, um, that were secondary to those stop signs. And that's a big risk and concern that they, that they were in agreement on. Um, we also updated our internet, um, contract with savings of a little over twelve thousand dollars this past year, uh, for, over the course of the year, um, and increased our services at all of our sites from three, uh, two hundred to three hundred megabytes to one gigabyte.
So, what was our cost?
Ma'am?
What was our, our internet cost?
I don't have the total, but it was roughly twelve, it's worth roughly twelve thousand dollars less than what we were paying, um, with our new, with our new agreement.
I'd like to know what we were paying. I appreciate that.
Um, we're paying a hundred and twenty-two dollars a month now for the available service per location. And we also have a large amount of drop off next, uh, on November the eighth, our, our large amount of drop off is scheduled for the eighth, uh, of November from eight to noon. And then I also have some updates there of the, some of the business projects that are going on.
Um, John, could you, um, kinda elaborate on, uh, some of the employment that's been seeked for the city? I, you know, I've shared that through social media and whatnot.
Yes, sir. Um, the city has, oh, the city?
Yes.
The city position, yes, sir. We have two positions open. We have a part-time, uh, library staff member position that's open. Um, the, the person that was in that position initially was doing our community outreach programs, uh, social media, graphic design, putting flyers together and running our book mobile program, uh, to the nursing homes and the housing authority units. And so, we're trying to find somebody that also, um, could drive a bus, a small, or a hard van, small bus, and, um, and also get a bit of graphic design or, you know, social media, put the flyers together and, uh, something like that. And then we also have a, a public work position.
I don't know who would be able to answer this one, but, uh, I've been inquiring also about, uh, street projects, um, in my precinct. So, when are we gonna be able to get that item placed on the agenda?
As of now, as kinda we discussed, uh, that looks like that's gonna be a December agenda item for the priorit, prioritization of streets by council members. That is a December agenda item is where we are.
Okay. I also was, uh, what we discussed as well about the, um, giving of funds for the precincts.
Yes, ma'am, and, and like I explained, every precinct gets an equal share, and if you can get, and I, and I said, if you can get council to say that you get a bigger percentage than they get, then that, that's council's choice. That's not my choice.
Well, before we go into details, we're, the question was, was it gonna be an agenda item? When it's an agenda item, we will, we will address it in detail, and he said it would be in December. But we, but I, I was wanting to make sure that it was placed on the agenda because here lately, we're not able to place an item. Can I finish? No, ma'am. Because what, I mean, I think you heard what I said. Everybody has a right to speak. Of course they do. Okay, can I finish? But at this point, I said it's not an agenda item. This wasn't, it wasn't, this is not the place to ask for it to be here because we're talking about... It's a place to ask for it to be placed. It's a project. Not at this time. But it's a project. Not at this time. It's my opportunity to have, please, no, it's mine. That's enough. So, how do we get an item on the agenda? No, ma'am. How do we get an item on the agenda? No, ma'am. That is not what we're discussing. We're in the middle. You do not have a constitutional right as a chair of this. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. How can we get an item on the agenda? That is not where we are on this list. We're in the middle of a project, and we're doing an agenda item. And at this point, that is not. On this, this item. This is the item we're on. Well, we're not trying, I just, I'm not discussing it, asking for it to be discussed. I'm asking for it to be placed on the agenda. It is not. At this time, we're in the middle of an item. So, it would be on December agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear. You heard that twice. It's on the December's agenda. There we go. On with, were we through with that?
You want me to read this, ma'am?
Okay, at this time, uh...
That's kinda under projects, and I wanted to make sure the public, I've sent this email out to council, but it's a letter from our attorneys regarding the civil action nine twenty-four civil CV one forty-one, James Gentry versus City of Crockett, Texas, and the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Lufkin Division. It says, enclosed please find the order granting defendant City of Crockett, Aientia Fisher, Marquita Beasley, Jean Colwell, and Mike Marsh's motion for summary judgment. The order dismisses all plaintiff's claims against defendants, City of Crockett, Aientia Fisher, Marquita Beasley, Jean Colwell, and Mike Marsh. The retaliation claim against the C I D C, which has not been served and has not made an appearance, was not dismissed. Accordingly, the court has ordered the clerk to remove defendant City of Crockett, Aientia Fisher, Marquita Beasley, Jean Colwell, and Mike Marsh from the case, and no additional pre-trial or trial activities are necessary. Please note that the plaintiff has the option to appeal this order to the Fifth Circuit, Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals of New Orleans, Louisiana. Once the judgment becomes final, the judgment will not become final until the claims against the C I D C are resolved. I intend to call Mr. Robinson today to discuss remaining C I D C claim.
Was that an item that was on the agenda? It was an update. And he's, he's allowed to do an update. Oh, he can. Yes, he is, as the city manager. He can. Okay, item number three. Uh, Police Department Manpower and Criminal Incident Report for September twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Police Department Manpower Criminal Activity Report for September of twenty twenty-five. Total of sixteen employees worked two thousand four hundred and six hours, caused a four hundred and fifty-four calls for service, investigated sixteen traffic accidents, made fifty-three arrests, issued four hundred and five traffic citations, completed eighty-two reports, and responded with fourteen alarm calls. Eleven of those were false alarm. Uh, below you'll see a breakdown. Now, if there are any questions on our criminal incident report.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number four. Fire Department Monthly Activity Status Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. For the month of September, we had a total call, called in the forty-four. Breaking that down, there were thirty-five calls within the city limits, and there was none of calls in our counter response area. Uh, is there a further breakdown in front of the office? Any questions on the...
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Item number five. Consider an approval contingency fee contract with Limebarger, uh, Gargan Blair and Sampson L.L.P. for the collection of the municipal court's debt and account receivables and no fee costs for delinquent city water utility collection.
Mayor and council, um, Mr. James Guest is here on behalf of Limebarger to discuss, uh, the possibility of us joining their firm for collections and fees, and he's gonna make a presentation to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Stanley, Mayor, uh, council members. Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, currently, I am one of your attorneys. Our firm has represented the city of Crockett for over thirty years in your, uh, delinquent property tax collections. Uh, with that being said, I wanna first introduce, uh, Ms. Carrie Mentor, who you all know. She is, um, chief appraiser and also the tax collector for the majority of the entities, including the city here. And we have a long history working with this mentor's office, and she's just been really great to work with. Uh, extremely knowledgeable and gives us a lot of great guidance. Uh, I also have, uh, Ms. Janita Hurley here with me as well. She's one of our client liaisons. Uh, she worked for Navarro JP as a clerk for over twenty years and has been with our firm for a number of years. And so, uh, with that being said, uh, I've met with Judge Lawrence. Uh, I've also met with Ms. Hart and gone through your files, uh, met with, uh, Mr. Anderson and also Mr. Stanley several times, and we are going to be a huge upgrade to your current collection process. Uh, I gave you two handouts. One is a professional qualifications. That's a nice spiral. I'm not gonna go through that, but that's just information about our law firm. If you care to have more information. Uh, I also handed out this to Limebarger. It's a quick, four-page presentation that I will be going through. It just has features and benefits. Uh, one of the first things I want to discuss is that our program costs the city nothing. You will never be out any money for this project. Uh, one of the processes that, uh, the city currently has is manually sending data to your current collector. You're using in code software, Tyler Technology Software, and our firm has a module that will automate that process and make it streamlined and more efficient, which means more collections. We're a very high-tech law firm. Uh, we are also, one of our founding members, uh, Ms. Sampson was out of center Texas. Uh, we've risen to be the largest in, in the United States for what we do. Um, we have a strong presence here. I live in the Lufkin area. I manage three offices here in the east Texas, Livingston, Jasper, and in Lufkin. And so, not only are we a, a local, regional law firm, but we're also getting the largest in the nation. We represent, uh, almost every major city, uh, Chicago, New York, Miami, Philadelphia, all of the big, large cities here in the, in the state of Texas, Houston, Dallas, San Antonio. Uh, and I have some numbers on the very last page here. This is showing kind of what our success stories are. But just to go over a few of these features, so, uh, again, over thirty years' experience representing the city of Crockett, uh, big collective municipal fees and fines for over twenty-five years. Our law firm has copyright, uh, skip tracing technology, and because of our size, we buy volumes of data at a fraction of the price of what even our nearest... data at a fraction of the price that even our nearest competitor can. Skip tracing is searching for those defendants who owe the city money and that's really the end of the day, that's our service. We are locating, especially those who don't live here in the county, who are out of the county, out of, you know, throughout the United States, those large trucks who come through here to eighty-seven, nineteen, seven, twenty-one, they are not out of our reach. We have call centers throughout the United States that we manage. Every phone call is recorded and those are our employees, these are not farmed-out positions. So, we have a very, very methodical and ironclad process that's gonna maximize your collections. But the technology is always working in the background. It's, once we receive a data file, we will be searching for those defendants, we will be sending them letters, and then they will be contacting us or the court to make payments. We also have a statewide scoff law program. We're the only firm in the state of Texas and we will help the city establish a productive and successful scoff law program. So, those out-of-town drivers who come through here, I think they're not going to have to pay, we will help the city set up an interlocal agreement and a resolution with the state of Texas in order for those accounts to be turned over to the state. And those individuals will not be able to register their vehicles, cars, boats, motorcycles, anywhere in the state where they may have a vehicle registered. So, this should actively increase your collections as well. We also have a text messaging program that we can send text messages directly to the defendant's phones, give them an easy way to pay. We also talked about re-establishing an online payment program, trap payments dot com is one of the companies that we had discussed. And again, these are services, will cost you no money. So, that's just some of our features. As my mom says, features tell and benefits sell, so let's look at the benefits. Number one is the increased collections of your out-of-county drivers. So, we will be able to, I believe the city is already using Omni, that just puts a hold on driver's license, that's a very passive way of collecting, but it is, it's a good way that you're waiting for driver's license to be renewed. Again, there is no cost ever. The firm, we had discussed with Mr. Stanley about water, your delinquent utility water collections. This is not one of the services that we're allowed to add, we're allowed to add a fee to the defendant's bill. That's why it costs you no money for the fees and fines collections because the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure allows us to add thirty percent directly to their bill. So, it's a contingency fee contract. And so, we are adding it to their fee and then the defendants pay that. But when it comes to utility collections, there is no such statute. Our fees are typically thirty percent, but the firm decided to waive our fee and we will send out those annual collection letters on your utility water accounts at no cost. So, that's just another added benefit that we would like to offer to the city today. We also have monthly personalized reports that will determine, it will show you the activity, how many letters have been turned over, how many accounts have been submitted to us. It will also show you how many phone calls have been made and your dollar resolutions and also dollars received. Our firm has also got an extra step, so in cases of indigency, we have given the judge the full right to waive our fee if there is a case of indigest. So, and also, if there's time served or community service, then our fee does not apply, it only applies when money has been received from the defendant. And again, the judge has that discretion to waive. You're also getting five staff members assigned to your account. So, I'm a partner, Ms. Hurley is a client liaison, Barbara Taylor is another client liaison, and Arizona Lee Barrow. We also have an account manager that's not been identified yet. If we are hired tonight, we will have one assigned within the next couple of days. We expect that the project will take thirty to ninety days at the most, probably around thirty, forty-five days I would highly expect to get this off the ground. But the efficiency part of this process is gonna be very seamless for both the community and the court. The technology that the city is using, Tyler Technology Product Ink Code is one of the largest software providers in the states, is a, it's not a cheap software either, but we have so many clients that use it, again, they have what's called a Limebarger module. That fee costs usually fifteen hundred, you can go up to three thousand dollars for that module, which our firm will pay for that module. And the city will give us an invoice, we will cover those costs. So, again, this is a true zero cost for the city. And again, the accounts that are submitted to us, they can be taken back, they're really just a tool for the city to use and we will be working at the discretion of, of course, Judge Lawrence, the city, and Ms. Hart as well. If you turn the page, this is just a few of the cities that I represent on the left here, that you, you know, City of Center, Huntington, Zavala, and Dybal. Most of these are all your deep east Texas. I represent many more cities than just this, but I just wanted to show you the last seven years where our collection percentages are and just look at the staggering number of collected items off. So, your resolution rate is all those accounts that have been submitted that have been adjudicated on some fee or dismissed, time served, your collection, those are dollars in hand, that's actual money that our clients received. The city of Lufkin, over a seven-year period, almost three million dollars. You have very small cities like the city of Zavala, Texas, which has a thirty-three percent collection rate and we've collected just over four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for them and just a short amount of time we've represented them in the last seven years. So, I can only, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to collect big dollars on your behalf. And then again, the regional cities, you just summon our southeast Texas, I did include Dallas in there, but as you can see, there's some large cities and I mainly represent smaller deep east Texas cities. You know, one thing our competitors like to say is we're so big that we just focus on our smaller clients, so that's all I have, our rural cities here in this Texas, I live here, and as this mentor, she sees me and my staff on a weekly basis throughout the week, and we just have a really good relationship with our clients. So, with that, are there any questions regarding how the process works or...
No, maybe my voice is a far, city manager.
Sure.
Just basically, I was asking, how much is the debt for the municipal court?
Well, that, that number varies, of course, but, and how far back we go is the problem. And so, that's, I can tell you that what we do is, I pull files from, since September of twenty-four for collections and I guess I looked at it from a different standpoint. I looked to see what we had collected since September of twenty-four with our current delinquency attorneys. And that total was only ten thousand dollars since September of twenty-four. And so...
So, we've only collected ten thousand dollars?
Right.
And we, can you give me the, so we don't have the debt amount?
I do not have that amount with me right now, no ma'am.
But I can get it to...
Yes, you can get that amount.
Okay.
But it will be a staggering number, I can tell you.
What about the utility, water utility? What about the debt there?
That number has decreased significantly since the ordinance changed to where you have to own the property to get your own meter, but we're still in the seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollar range. Yes ma'am.
I'd like to get a...
Sure, no problem.
...certain number on tomorrow. So, that'll kind of pretty much tell us, because there will be thirty percent of what the delinquent fees are? Is that what they will be recovering?
Well, we will get our fees, they will add the thirty percent to those fees. So, we will get our total amount of fees back. What they do cost us nothing.
Right, but they are paid out of the amount that you recover from the...
Yes, yes, we recover, including their thirty percent, then we would pay them the thirty percent.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
And this was, the legislature enacted these laws in order to not put the burden on those defendants who pay timely, the burden is paid on those who try to evade, you know, or not pay. And so, this has really been a great source of, I guess, benefit to society in general that, that, you know, those who don't pay are ones who actually are paying that bill, so.
We all got in a system in place where people that make can't afford to pay.
Yes, and the judge can waive our fee a hundred percent. If you cannot afford to pay your ticket, you know, there are, there are several options and I would want to speak for Judge Lawrence, but I, you know, time serves, a lot of times, you know, we're not putting people in jail for citations these days, but community service is another option. But if you just aren't gonna pay your fee and you don't have the money to pay our fee, then the judge can waive our fee a hundred percent.
Because we're still in a small town and there ain't a lot of jobs and a lot of people out here still struggling.
Absolutely.
And this will get a lot of those out-of-town travelers too that we haven't been getting.
You don't wanna just, just, just look at one side of people and just try to get the money out for them, you know?
Sure.
Because I think what he's also saying, because Judge has talked to us about it and I don't know if you've had any, you know, observed.
The judge is making money, so they don't have to worry about, I'm talking about the people that's really out here struggling that can't pay that, you know?
No, I said my statement wasn't the judge was making money. What he does is he asks them what they're capable of, how they, if they said, I don't have enough money, he can talk and negotiate with them and we have had some that said, I would like to make a payment, I would like to do this, I would like to do that. But it is, the bottom line is if they're stopped, it is a violation. And so, legally, if it's a violation, it's a penalty that goes with it, but they do try to work it out, you know? And so, I think, I think it's been a real fair way in doing it. And what I like about what's being proposed, the city, the way that it's been set up, it's been a full-time person that has been collecting and doing the paperwork and then she actually has to make a form and then send it in and they collect, I mean, do another step in there. But what this, what they're proposing is that their software, you just put the information in and it actually runs and they don't have to have it because we were trying to cut back on having a full-time person do it to a part-time.
Sure.
And that would save the city money in that sense. And also, because it's similar to what the county is doing and we can see the results of what they've had during this process by using the software. I think in the long run, it is a win situation for the city, that they'll be able to more or less get more than they were getting anyway. And like, it's, I think a significant number, I don't have the number, are from outside, people that are coming through the city. And once they're out of the city, they say, well, they'll see you when I see you. But they, they did do a violation in the city, so it would, it would be appropriate for them to make arrangements rather than just ignore them. But there are, and like I said, I've been comfortable with how when people have said, I need to do something differently, can you give me an alternative to cash or can you work it out so that I can do it that fits my budget? And they've been really complying with doing that.
We have several state guards also here with, there are some federal and state agencies that are here, the police bureau is another one, that I think in the last twelve years I've received maybe, there's been six complaints, the law firm has me reply to those within forty hours. We take every, every complaint that comes in very seriously. And I'm proud to announce that we've only had six and most of those have been people who have jumped around the country, moving from place to place. And I received the file and I pinpointed who this person has been. We're not, you know, we are not trying to be ugly to people, but we say this, you've been here, you've been here, you know, this driver's license, this utility account, and so please contact the court. And so, I did one time with a person that had a Mike Smith name and we, you know, apologized for, you know, him receiving the letter. Again, we're just, we're notifying people, we're not taking the court and they can come in and speak with Judge Lawrence and make their arrangements to pay. And then, not only, and I've traveled through Crockett quite a bit, so I've traveled, you know, to other parts of the state, coming from the Lufkin area, and I just see how many trucks are here and I know they just feel like they can get a pass by leaving, you know, our jurisdiction and going elsewhere, thinking that we won't find them. And we just have such a great record of locating and bringing these people in and letting the judge make the determination of what is fair and right in each of those cases. So, that's what Judge Lawrence will be getting out of.
So, what kind of turnaround do you have on, once you've sent out letters and to recover these fees, what kind of...
Because there is such a backlog of accounts, I've made the recommendation that we not mail out on all of them at once because it would just inundate the court, I've experienced this before. So, my recommendation is to mail out on, say, A through G or, you know, maybe a certain time period, we want to do the newer ones first. And so, we can, you know, again, that's gonna be at the court's discretion on how they want to proceed, but of course, we can mail them all out at the same time. I would just caution against doing that because it can be a little overwhelming. But I believe the turnaround time, if everything works smoothly, should be, I'm gonna say an average of forty-five days to get this off the ground. So, it could be less, maybe a little bit more just depending on Tyler Technologies installing the module and we have to pass an information back to the court to start our program, but it should be a very good turnaround, especially given the software that you're using and how many clients of ours utilize that same software.
We're ready for a motion.
And in council, there's four action items that'll need to take place. The first one you'll see is for the contingency fee contract. The second is for the resolution authorizing their thirty percent. And the third one will be executing the contract. And then the fourth would be terminating the contract with Purdue. So, we'll need to make motions on all four of those to solidify.
Do we put this all at one time? Make a motion on all of them?
I think you probably need to do one at a time.
Okay, so we're starting with number six. Is it the resolution?
Number five.
Number five.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I make a motion concerning item five, that we approve a contingency fee contract with Limebarger, is that Gogan?
Yeah, Limebarger Law Firm works for the district.
Okay, sir?
Limebarger Law Firm works fine.
Okay, okay. Limebarger Law Firm for the collection of municipal court debts and account receivables and no fee costs for delinquent city water utility collection.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Ready, all in favor?
opposed?
None opposed. Okay, item number six. Consider and approve a reso, oh, I forgot, that's the one that you need to make a motion on, number six.
You can go ahead and read it.
Oh, consider and approve a resolution authorizing the collection fee of thirty percent of debts and account receivable for the city of Crockett Municipal Court.
Well, I make a motion that we, concerning item six, that we approve a resolution authorizing the collection fee of thirty percent of debts and account receivables for the city of Crockett Municipal Court.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Motion carries. Number seven. Consider and approve authorizing the execution of the city contract with the Limebarger Law Firm for the collection of City of Crockett Municipal Court account receivables. Motion?
Well, I make a motion concerning item seven, that we approve authorizing the execution of the city contract with Limebarger Law Firm for the collection of City of Crockett's Municipal Court account receivables.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Item number eight. Consider and approve terminating the contract with Purdue Brendan Feitfield, Collins and Mott L L P for the collection of the municipal court's debts and account receivables. Mott LLP for the collection of the municipal court's debts and account receivables.
I'll make, I guess, I'll make a motion concerning item eight, that we approve terminating the contract with the Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott LLP for the collection of the municipal court debts and account receivables.
I second the motion.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Motion carries.
I'm through.
You got it going on, bro.
You got it going on, okay. That brings us to item number nine. Consider an approval resolution by the City of Crockett, City denying Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC application to increase rates related to Encore's statement of intent to increase rates filed on or about June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, requiring reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meeting Act, making other findings and provision related to the subject and declaring an effective date.
Mayor and council, on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, Encore basically released an increase in its revenues of about thirteen percent, and we're a member of the Alliance of Encore Cities, and they're requesting that the city council join in in opposing Encore's rate increases. And the resolution's in your packet.
Who made that request?
Ma'am.
Who made the request again?
The Alliance of Encore Cities, which we're a member of.
I make a motion, we oppose the rate increase.
I second.
Okay, is it?
It's moved in second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor? Okay, we don't want a rate increase, we don't have to. Okay. That brings us to item number ten, the executive session. I think we're having it in here.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll be having it here, and thank you so much. You may wait us out, but we'll be in here, and y'all will be out there. Thank you so much.